Good evening and welcome to the Norton School Committee Meeting. Monday, June 18, 2018. Norton Media is recording this meeting. If there is anyone else in the audience who's recording, please inform us at this time. Please stand with plecta.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first our agenda in minutes. Does anybody, did everybody attend or not? Any questions or comments? Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those favor? Aye.
So I have this, this is for she, right?
That's a summary of the expenses. You can just say that you read, that you signed the warrants today. And you'll be entering it to public record next meeting.
Okay. So I signed the warrants today, but we'll be putting them in at our next meeting. Student representative.
Alright. So, um, the middle school has their field trips. The eighth graders went to New York. The seventh graders went to Six Flags. And the sixth graders went to Cape Town Park. All went smoothly. All students returned.
That's awesome.
The first annual Dorf Film Festival received career reviews and we all can't wait for next year. Um, and there's also the preschool graduated and will be moving on up. The Norton High class of 2031.
Um, the sports season just wrapped up. The softball team did a great job this season. Sadly, they lost in the semifinal round. Um, but they were amazing. I went to a couple of their games. It was awesome to watch. Um, the track team sent some girls to Nationals. Julia Pealan took second place in the two mile, um, which is incredible. And they had a relay team of Kylie Dion, Julian Manuel, Kirsten Warren, and Julia Pealan that took 19th, I believe, which is incredible. Um, and some students went to the Special Olympics. I'm not sure how they did, um, but I'm sure it was amazing. Um, and...
They did great. Lots of medals all around.
Yeah, perfect. Um, and then all the grades that are changing schools, um, did their visits, which was great, and got presentations. And high school students were taking our final exams this week. And we're finishing on Wednesday and the rest of the school system is finishing with the half day on Thursday. And the Norton Middle School has their Lancer Luau eighth graders, um, on Wednesday. So it's very exciting too.
Thank you. Questions or comments for that? So we're moving on to the Girl Scout Project.
So, uh, we have a, in your packet, I believe, uh, is a presentation from Sam Ward, Sam Mariah. There you are. Come on board. Have a seat right up front. Um, Sam is working to be a gold award, uh, for Gold, uh, Girl Scouts, excuse me. Um, so tonight she's here to present what she would like to do, um, which would require, um, your approval. And she has a presentation, so.
Do I?
Yep, you can do it from there.
That works great.
Sam's mom is an employee of ours, in case you don't know. She's one of our ELL teachers, devil one within the district.
Yeah, so basically, in April and May of this year, I have turned to Abby's Collaborative in first to second grade classroom. And during recess and lunch and their specials where the two schools were kind of separated together, I noticed that the two groups were separated, the deaf children and the hearing mainstream children were kind of in their own isolated groups. And I wanted to help change that and give the mainstream students a better opportunity to learn and improve so they can get better communication. So I, so I looked around at some ideas for signs I could possibly make for the playground. And I found a sign which is in Midway. I don't know if you see it, it's kind of dim, but has the sign language letters on it. So I've been sketching copies of the letters. And that sign is already attached to the playground. Mine obviously won't be since it's already been built. But it has a few approximate methods. And I've talked to a sign company. And I have them on my side. They donate it for me. And it's going to be two thin pieces, about three by two by five feet. And it will be attached through the wire fence around the JCS playground. And one side will have all the sign language alphabet letters. On the other side, we'll have the Lancer, the North Public Schools.
Yeah, very cool. It is very cool. It's great that you're even thinking of helping us with this, especially with our diverse student population, as you know, that we have. So we appreciate it very much. It requires a vote of the school committee because it is a facility. Um, and so that's the reason why Sam had to come in front of you and ask you permission to be able to put these appropriate signs, um, at the locations as she's, you know, being put.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
You being there on the playground, you see how badly the kids want to interact with each other and some, and the teachers are great because they help a lot with it, but that would be fantastic.
So you need a motion and a second and then a vote. Discussion.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Second? I need discussion. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Very much. Thanks, Sam, very much.
Great idea.
Want you just looking, these kids get older. It makes my job exciting.
And next we're on to kindergarten age requirement.
Madam Chair, we have here tonight Mr. and Mrs. Raby who are going to join us at the table. Um, as you know, a couple of months ago, we had a presentation of discussion on the topic of the age requirement, which came actually through the policy process. And, um, I then met with the two of them. We had a discussion about, at this time, the committee was going to look at into the fall, look at potentially put a, a discussion about this. And, um, as you know, because we don't have a traditional three-minute speaking period and all that in our agenda, that means that rightfully a parent, a person, a citizen of the town can petition to be part of the agenda and come forth in front of the agenda. The babies have chosen to do that. So I met with them and said, you know, pretty much good people, they're not going to be yelling and screaming. There's probably enough differences that needs to be ironed out and the committee is the one that has it. And then we have some thoughts that we've been trying to address as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity for my wife, Megan, and I to come here and, uh, and speak to you tonight. Um, we currently obviously live in Norton. We have two children. We have a seven, almost eight-year-old son who's in second grade at the JCS. And we have a daughter named Anne Marie, whose birthday is September 1st of 2013. Uh, and we are here tonight because we'd like to ask for a waiver, or at least consideration for a waiver of policy in regards to the age requirement for kindergarten for the town of Norton. Uh, we'd like to briefly just over a couple of bullet points, uh, to give you a little bit of understanding of what our thought process is, where we're at in our, uh, in our discussions at home and with other faculty members that we've spoken with and just basically ask for a waiver from you, so.
So, um, Anne Marie was, um, should we have her signed up for a private kindergarten to attend in the fall? Unfortunately, you know, we would much rather her be able to go to school with her brother. Uh, he's only has one year left at JCS and it's really important for us to have that, for them to have that school age experience together. So we're really hopeful that they can see each other in the hallways and just kind of ease that transition for her. Um, however, she does not really need any easing. She is the brightest, um, little girl that I know of that age. She knows her alphabet. She can sound words out. She's writing her numbers. She can write her name. Um, and because she signed up for the private kindergarten, they asked us to have her screened. So we were able to have her screened at JCS, which she ranked in the 99th percentile in almost all of her, um, tasks. I think the motor tasks, she ranked in the 97th percentile. So, um, from talking with her pre-K teachers, who told me in December that they thought she'd be ready next fall for kindergarten, um, and the screening, and also, um, our son's kindergarten teacher approached me during the screening and said, you know, what's going on? You know, I, I know, I see when her birthday is, what's, why is she here? And I explained to her the situation. She said to me, um, she's beyond ready and I hope that I can have her in my class next year. So those are just a couple of points I wanted to make, um, just so you could get to know Anne Marie a little bit better and understand why we're kind of pushing this. I know each child is different and not all children are ready to go to kindergarten at the age of five. If this was our son at this age, you know, we wouldn't be pushing this so hard. Um, but she's different and she, she really is ready to go, so.
Now, you know, there was a couple of things that concerned me as a resident in Norton taxpayer. Not concerned, but you know, um, it's frustrating, um, in this situation because Norton's one of those communities that does have school choice. And in order to keep enrollment up, you know, school choice is a great option and I'm all for it. But it's frustrating as a parent to live in this town and be able to see other kids being brought in to make sure that that enrollment stays sufficient. And we're having to send our daughter out of town to go to a private kindergarten. Uh, so that's very frustrating. Uh, that's one thing that, that we thought was another reason why we wanted to come here and at least fight for it and see if, uh, if you guys would be willing to, uh, explore this possibility. You know, the other thing, and you know, dates are interesting, but that's kind of over here. We're talking about dates, right? Well, um, we, I, I went to elementary school here in Norton. I then moved to Aldborough where I grew up and I graduated. Uh, and throughout my professional career, I've spent times in different parts of the country. We made our way back to this area of the country and we chose to live in Norton for a reason. I had a great experience growing up here and we wanted our kids to do the same. Uh, ever since I've known, um, schooling Norton, unlike other towns, starts after Labor Day because of the golf tournament at the TPC. Um, it's my understanding that that's going to be the case for this upcoming year. And I know we're talking about the age of five. There's no doubt, based on the way the dates work out, that she would be the age of five by the time she walks to the door at JCS as a kindergarten. Lastly, um, I, I made sure, I took a look at the policy, the way it's written on the webpage. I know you folks have it, but I just wanted to pass out, because there's one thing that I had a question about that I wanted to, um, get some clarification on.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
And if I could, uh, get your attention to the second sentence in the first paragraph where it says, "To be eligible to enter kindergarten, in the fall of 2018, children must turn five on or before August 31st, 2018." And then in parentheses, it says, "Date of birth, on or before, 8/31/13." And the question I have about that, or the clarification I'm looking for is in regards to, uh, U.S. Federal Code of Federal Regulations in section 401, 404 dash 102, excuse me. Where it actually defines what age means. And it said, "Age means how many years old you are. You reach a particular age on the day before your birthday." For example, if you are sixty, if you, if your 62nd birthday, and I'm just going to change it up to fifth, the dates, uh, for what we're talking about here. For example, if your fifth birthday is just, is September 1st, 2013, you become five on August 31st, 2013. Now, if we choose to be in compliance with the federal code of regulations, then based on the date that you have of turning five on or before August 31st, 2013, works. However, the date that you have in parentheses there forces your policy to be out of compliant with the federal code of regulation. Because that date should actually say, "Date of birth on or on or before August 30th, 2013." In order to be compliant with the federal code of regulation. So I was hoping to get some clarification regarding that. I understand that you probably do get petitions from other parents who have kids that are on, you know, the brink of having a birthday in September. And I get that. But we're not talking the difference of a couple of days here. In this particular case, and based off of the compelling results that we saw in our screening process, which was done by, you know, the teaching professionals that you folks have put in place here in the town of Norton, um, you know, we're talking the difference of a couple of hours. And, um, having a discussion with Dr. Byatt a few weeks ago, I really would just urge you that trust the professionals that you've put in place to make the decision, not the date. And that's all we're asking for.
So Madam Chair, um, as you know, the discussion is, is, well, first of all, I, I told you, I said the, uh, the code of federal regulations is probably new to most of us on this side of the table, but I appreciate his homework. So this is, this goes back to the discussion we had before. Uh, Mr. Shidi brought up an idea which you have, uh, we've put together before you. And Jen took it to another level of contacting, um, a couple of districts, how they do it or don't do it. And we apologize that you're getting it tonight, but literally, this has been something we've been trying to work on the language. Dan mentioned, and this is where the original idea comes from, Dan. Uh, Dan mentioned to you...
You get credit.
Yes, you get credit.
Or yes.
You can give your credit anyway though.
So the idea would be that a student that's born, and with all due respect, forget my federal regulation, code regulations for a second, a student that's born, that's, um, meets our deadline, that the district's policy would be that there's a fluctuating date of August 31st to the first day of school, not forgetting kindergartens, but for the opening of school. So an example, you would be waiving, if you will, that any student born before the 31st, but no later than the first day of school, which this year is September 4th, that we have the right through the professionals to screen that student through a slightly different process, because they've missed, missed their original cutoff. But we're also establishing that the date can't just be open until September 30th. So, you know, we are saying that. And that, um, the decision of the staff be final and unappealable. In other words, they are in fact going to screen the student, take the student through that process, but there isn't now, let's go back to the school committee or to the superintendent, that the professionals do make the decision and based on that decision, they need to forward. I don't know if you want to add anything else to it?
No, and I think that, um, it's hard to apply a waiver for a single situation because every case is different. And if we're going to allow for a waiver in one particular case, I think it's very important as a district to have procedures in place that are consistent and fair for every family that's going through this process, that we can go through it and look, um, at where their child is. So I know that your daughter was screened through the DION process. I haven't seen it yet because I know they gave it to you to take with you. Um, there are three other assessments that we typically do with our students as well. Um, one is a developmental screening, one is a social emotional screening, and then there are academic screenings for ELA and MAF that typically don't get done until the beginning of the school year. So what our proposal to the committee is that, um, for cases where a child falls within that window of August 31st to the first day of school, that they go through a process where they apply to be considered for early entrance, they would apply for that waiver through my office. Um, that way, all of the information is coming to one central location, regardless if it's a JCS student or an LGM student. And that screening process would take place separately from the regular kindergarten screening, where we would give the kindergarten teacher and administrator at schools and colleges would give those three, uh, four assessments to the child. And we would meet with the family and go through the results of the screening with that.
And it would be done, and here's the key. The key is that we need to establish a cutoff date for that. So in the proposal, we have June 1st, that we would need to be notified by June 1st prior to September. Because we, we really, you know, unless a student moves in, this is out there and unfortunately families need to make a decision that, you know, because we don't have staff available in the summertime.
And that would give us the opportunity to work with families for the spring that were interested, have every, have all the screenings done at the beginning of September when our staff is still here, and be able to have that dialogue about what our recommendation is moving forward, before they have to make a decision to go to school and follow as well.
And the last part, I think.
Yes. Oh, sorry. It's September. June. I'm already in September.
So the August 31st deadline is there for everybody?
Yes.
But if we have a family who believes that there's something there, that, that window opens up another three to five days or so. You know, so, you know, this, this year it's September 4th, another year we've opened September. It all depends on where Labor, the Tuesday after Labor Day is.
Which could change with the golf tournament.
Yes. And any of that could, if, well, for an example, if, if next year, two years from now, two years from now, um, we do come back before Labor Day start of school, what does that mean? Well, it means are we still using the 31st or now we're using a different date or, so I mean, those would have to be discussions that take place then because the start of school is completely changed from the 31st. But I don't see that happening, uh, in the near future. Um, that the Office of Teaching and Learning rationale is, we want parents to know that they have this right, but at the same time, we need to check, we need to make sure that the LGM and JCS is treating everybody equally.
Right.
Then the third part is that the screening team is comprised of a kindergarten teacher, a school psychologist, and an administrator. In most cases, it will be the building principal, um, to administrate, administer the, the four different tools. And then from there, the screening team will make a recommendation and that decision would be considered final as a recommendation. So it takes you through a process. It gives you the right as a parent to apply as a process. But then a decision is in fact, we're using the data to say, you know what, this is a great idea, or you know what, it's not a good idea. And the professionals to call you are making that determination.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. So I think you kind of touched on it a little bit. What if we do move our school day and then it ends up starting on August 27th? Now, does that mean August 31st?
Right. So we would have to come back, we would have to come back to the committee as and say, we need to make changes to certain policies. We'd probably have other policies that have dates on them that we, we would have to look at.
Yeah, and I think, I think, you know, this alter, more screening, I think, would just have to be accepted by the parents, not just you, but anybody who came forward just because of the social emotional development we have going on in schools and everything else, the last thing we need is, is a kindergarten student who's not ready, that shouldn't quite be there yet either.
And these, the social emotional questionnaire and the developmental questionnaire are used for the first time this spring with our incoming kindergarteners. Actually, I'm sorry, just the social emotional screening, not the developmental screening. But it's something that we are looking to use in all of our screenings moving forward. Um, I did check and I know that that was not one of the assessments that you participated in. So we would probably still, I would recommend still doing that piece of it. But it was very, it was very informative to the teachers as they were looking at students and thinking about placement for the upcoming.
May I ask a question that I don't know the answer to? I was trying to figure it out and I couldn't. If a child ranks poorly, does the school have the right to say that they're not ready to go to kindergarten? Do they have the right to say, you have to do another year of pre-K?
If they're meeting the age requirement.
Then they have to. If they meet the age requirement and they don't do well scoring, can they still go to kindergarten?
We can recommend, suggest, but it is a parental decision.
As it is for any movement or stay.
And just to be clear, it's not a parental decision in our case?
Yes. Well said. No duly noted.
Well, I, I have a four-year-old niece that could not only go to kindergarten right now, but excel in it. So I understand where you're coming from and I applaud you for fighting for your daughter because it's not easy.
So I think that the, one of the things that's really interesting, and you know the debate last time, um, from, from all of us at the table, and I said that I was giving it to my professionals who were saying, you know, we'd like to keep a date and so on, and the babies, and I discussed that. I, I think one of the things that's really interesting is we have such a, we want to stick to this idea that parental decision is important. We want parents involved, absolutely. But we also want to make sure that, that, um, we may have to go the extra mile and say, we're not recommending because your child's immaturity level is still a question mark or, you know, they didn't do well on certain tasks or whatever. And I know that's, that's more work and all that, and I think our staff in general is fine with that. I just think that the issue comes down to the change in the face of public education. There's so much competition and so much that's going on there. And then the last piece, which Ms. O'Neil and I concur with 100%, and that is that we have a parent who has asked us, the public domain, to screen them, to see, is there anything there? And so we're going to use a date to say no while somebody else is saying yes. I'm not sure how much sense that makes for us. We could still say no, and the parents can disagree with us, but at least we've gone through an open process. The last part of this is, and the most difficult part of this is, we have, we now have to notify as, we have to notify the community that we've changed our policy. So we're going to have to, this June 1st date for this year is going, it's going to have to be something we consider waiving. Uh, but we, we consider for this year only adopting a X date. So maybe it's, I don't even know what that date would be, but we would have to come up with this.
June 18th.
Yes, June 18th. So I would say probably, because I'm going to have to bring in a teacher, a kindergarten teacher, an administrator, and well administrators are mostly here, and a, um, school psychologist, compensate them to come in and all of that. I don't think we're going to have a ton of people, by the way, but the fact is there's always that one or two that are looking. And now we've provided, potentially, you're going to provide that opportunity.
And we just need to be sure that we're being clear about the option for families, the other families that may have been interested should choose to go through. Yeah, but these people went above and beyond to come here and research it and do everything else. I think that they should be able to. And if somebody else didn't do it, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if I feel comfortable with two of our committee members not here to actually vote this in tonight, to put it into, this is our policy now. Although I do feel comfortable allowing...
And I think that I would be hesitant to put procedures listed here into the policy because as we know from doing all the policy work, it can change at any moment. So perhaps the language that would be, um, added would just be that first bullet. But that's something that we can do with local committee president. That's, I wonder how you would like to feel.
I have a September birthday. I'm the third youngest in my grade for 18 years.
I was too.
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, is they, if they already have her signed up in a kindergarten, we're going to get her in first grade anyway. I mean, I think it does.
Their choice is clear that they want to come here.
Exactly.
So I say we support their choice.
So as, as much as I know there aren't two other members here who could actually vote no, there are three members here who could vote yes. I don't know that to be true, but that could. What we need to be careful of is although absolutely Mr. and Mrs. Raby have done all of the legwork and all of that to make comment and suggest and so on, the Norton School Committee and I have to be consistent in our approach to treating all students who will potentially fall into this equally, as per parental choice, to file a request to have this take place. So I would, um, inform the committee that if it, if it moves forward, it needs to be forward, move forward as a policy statement and not as a singleton statement. Please. And we don't, it won't, it won't be a, I mean, we'll take out an ad in the local paper and, and get it out there. And we'll probably have to use, if I were with you, an internal date of probably no, no later than, I'm going to say, early July at best. Because if there's anybody who applies, I'm just going to ask if that teacher, administrator, school psychologist can come in one day and actually assist in this assessment. Going forward, we would have a drop dead date of June 1st for application to the process.
So the way that this policy is looking now is if your birthday falls after August 31st but before the first day of school, and your child is, and you're willing to have these assessments done, and whatever the assessments come out on, is the yes or no you can't?
Right. So your policy be number one and number two, but number three, four, or five would be the process. So policy would be students that are born after August 31st, but before the first day of school for North Public Schools may be screened in order to determine their readiness for kindergarten at the request of their parent guardian. In order to be considered for early admission, parents must request a screening through the Office of Teaching and Learning, no later than June 1st. That's your policy. Your procedure...
Well, then I think you also need to have the, the screening, screening team will make a recommendation or end on it was...
And that's a recommendation.
Final.
Yes. Yep. So it would be number one, two, and five. They, nobody really needs to know who the screening team is because it could be, it could change based upon...
And the assessments.
And the assessments could change, so that would be part of the process because assessments do change.
So we have to do a motion to change this so it's not one through five?
It'd be one, two, and five. We just read as one, two, and five, and it'd read as three statements instead of numbers one, two, and three, and one. There'd be no numbers, I'm sorry. It would be as...
And then we would have to officially update policy JEB.
Can I do that?
Correct. Nope.
Do we have a motion to change our procedures for kindergarten screening with students
after eight thirty-one to one, two, and five?
Motion to make those changes.
Second.
Any discussion?
On this end, please.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. For FY19 only, that that June 1st deadline has been extended to July-
Thirteenth is a Friday.
The July 13th.
I was thinking, is it the calendar? That's a good day.
For FY19, a friendly amendment for FY19 only, based upon it being June 18th, that we would go to July 13th, which also provides that if in fact a baby's child has not taken one of the assessments, they would be part of that as well, and they'd be notified and go from there.
So, motion to, no, we have first and second, and now it's a vote. All those in favor of the new procedures for kindergarten? I like the motion, yes. Well, thank you so much.
We'll come back to you. Next time, Mr. Abi, I need a question on the Code of Federal Regulation.
So now we move on to Mr. Ted Curly for his last official-
Yes.
Update.
Just going away update?
I only have seven pages to read. You can thank Kent Taylor for four pages of it. No, but thank you for having me once again. I'm going to do the spring sports update, which Caroline already said some of it, so I'm just going to piggyback on what you said. First off, baseball. Coming off a TBL championship and a sectional championship last season, the team graduated 11 seniors and returned only two players with any varsity experience. The team battled in a very tough TBL going four and 14, led by captains Brody Tinkham and Jack O'Brien. The Lancers lost eight games by two runs or less. They were extremely competitive and returned all starters for 2019. I look for the program to get back to where it was very quickly and want to thank Dr. Vieta and the administration for allowing me to coach in the past 10 years. We won 150 games, a state title, a league title, a sectional title, an Eastern Mass title, and I wish the program best and want to thank all my assistants, our trainers, parents, and especially all the great students that I coached.
And number one, Ben.
I'm going to get to you, Peter.
You got your own line, Peter.
Yep. Boys tennis, although the Norton High boys tennis team didn't go statistically well, this is from Coach Matoza, I feel like we are in the process of creating a solid program. Each year we have grown in numbers and interest from student athletes, and this was the first year that we had more than 10 players for a couple of years. For a team that went 0 and 18, we generate a lot of buzz, interest, and have a lot of fun. I think this is extremely impressive due to the fact that more than half of the team has never played tennis. Our goal is to continue growing the program, work even harder, improve our skills, and become competitive, all while still having the same amount of fun. Girls tennis also continued to grow under Coach Bev Northam, now having 23 members, the largest group we've ever had. They had somewhat of a challenging season because they were in the TBL Large, and if you know who's in the TBL Large, they're all tennis schools, it's tough. They managed to win several matches and ended the season with six wins and 11 losses. They were also voted by the other league tennis coaches to receive the sportsmanship award, winning over Hopkinton and Metfield, who finished second there. According to the voting coaches, this award is predominantly due to the ongoing positive reception given by two of our team members, recent graduates and sisters, Brooke Murphy and Stephanie. We look forward to going into the TBL Small next year. That was Coach Northam. Boys lacrosse finished 3 and 15, first year with, they only had four seniors this year. Standout players were Joe Weaver, Josh Fuller, and Clint Gallagher. Josh scored 47 goals and had six assists. Joe scored 18 goals and eight assists, and Clint ended up with a 52% save percentage, which is excellent in lacrosse. Josh was also named a Sun Chronicle All-Star. Girls lacrosse finished with the same record of 3 and 15. It was their first year as well playing in the TBL, which it's another one of those niche sports in the TBL that is really tough. Two of our wins did come in the TBL. Ally Whitman earned TBL All-Star, and Sun Chronicle All-Star, and Taylor Mulvihill and Ava Gesner were named honorable mention TBL All-Stars. Now to the teams that had killer seasons. Boys track and field, so I'm going to go as fast as I possibly can here. At the MSTCA State Freshmen and Sophomore Championship, freshman Paul Woznawskis not only won three events, including the 110 hurdle, 400 hurdle, in which he broke the meet record, but he also won the Athlete of the Meet Award. The team of Thomas Bingle, Ethan Tatro, Gabe Dennett, and Paul Woznawskis were also champions in the 4x800. Congrats to all the athletes who competed at the Division III State Championships, including Paul Woznawskis, Ian Pereira, Austin Carroll, Thomas Bingle, Pat Bingle, DJ The Hill, Sam McGrath, Pete Rivard, Chris Lieber, Aiden Lerner, Ethan Tatro, and Corey Stalters. The athletes who placed at the D3 Championships were freshmen. State champ Paul Woznawskis with a new personal record and grabbed the title as the fastest freshman in the state of Massachusetts, and ended the season ranked number three in the United States in the 400 hurdles. Senior captain Ian Pereira was second overall in the 400 meter at the D3 States and was the 4x8 relay team of Austin Carroll, Thomas Bingle, Pat Bingle, and DJ The Hill, who posted the second fastest time in school history. TBL champions were Paul again, and then our 4x4 team, Aiden Lerner, Austin Carroll, Pete Rivard, and Ian Pereira. They were, the boys' TBL All-Stars this year were Ian Pereira and Paul Woznawskis. The ultimate teammate award went to Chris Lieber. Rookie of the Year went to Gabe Dennett and Kevin Mahoney. Most Improved went to Pat Bingle. MVP to Paul Woznawskis, and the JFK to Alex Woznawskis. So a great year by them. Our girls track and field team worked extremely hard, finishing with an amazing record of 5 and 1, taking on some very difficult TBL Large schools. At the freshman and sophomore meet, the girls had three finishers in the top 10. Kylie Dionne was seventh in the 400 meter. The 4x1 team of Eve Rodriguez, Kylie Dionne, Carly Murphy, and Heather Curran placed sixth, and Bella-
Metrisavitz.
Thank you. Metrisavitz placed second in the 800 meter. At the last chance to qualify meet, we don't always attend, we had a special request by a group who wanted to take a shot at Nationals in the Sprint Medley. Kirsten Loring, Kylie Dionne, Julia Newell, and Julia Payland ran to see what they could do. Not only did they break the meet record and qualify for Nationals, they did it all by themselves and no one to run against going in 4:16:32. All these girls never cease to amaze Coach Taylor. At the D3 State meet, the girls came in eighth place overall out of an incredible 51 teams. Not a bad finish for our first time competing against some of the toughest schools in Massachusetts. As you know, we were D4 in track prior to this season. We had many girls contribute, getting points. Bella, Katie Bradley, Julia Payland, Mary Distel, to name a few. Also, Meg Nichols placed fourth in the shot book. Julia Payland was the D3 State champion in the two-mile, running an amazing 11 minutes in 13.66 seconds. Again, all these girls managed to accomplish these things on an 80-degree day. So Julia then went on to the All-State meet and finished second overall in all of Massachusetts. And then she placed seventh in the New England competition, and she just competed and got second at Nationals, as Caroline said. The girls set five school records this year. Mary Distel broke the pentathlon record by over 400 points, and Julia broke both the one-mile, two-mile records before she graduated. TBL champs were Bella, Meg Nichols, and Julia. TBL All-Stars were Mary Distel, Meg Nichols, Bella, and the TBL MVP for the Large was Julia Payland. Okay. This year we started a unified track program for the first time, and it was their inaugural season, and it was just awesome to go watch if you had a chance to. And the kids had an absolute blast, and I know the coaches did as well. Their only regular season loss was to CCOM, who ended up being the back-to-back Division One State Champion. We, in our first season, were the Division Two South Champions, and we were the runner-up out of 30 teams in Division Two for the entire state in Unified Jour. We did have four individual state champions, Joey Carroll, Sarah Tatarzik, Jasmine Sudan, and Becca Carroll. And last but not least-
Who is the coach for that?
Nicole Newman.
Nicole Newman, yeah.
Yes. And I think she would like to start Unified Basketball next year. Last but not least, softball. The Norton Lancers softball team had another great season. They went 19 and 1 in the regular season. They won their third TBL championship in a row, a perfect 14 and 0 in the TBL, and their non-league schedule was really difficult. Coach Lazat and I worked to make it a tough schedule, and they just came through with flying colors at 19 and 1. They have six seniors leaving us this year, and they really left their mark on Norton with a varsity career record of 89 wins and nine losses, and only two losses in four years at home. So, team accomplishments, you might have heard of her, Kelly Nelson, broke the all-time Massachusetts State Strikeout Record, which is now at 1,331, because that's what she ended up at. Kelly Nelson, Steph Noski, Olivia Peterson, Ally Frontino, all collected their 100th hit this year. Kelly was named the Massachusetts Gatorade State Player of the Year for the second year in a row. They're back-to-back-to-back TBL Champions, and they won the South in 2015 and 2017. They lost a heartbreaker this past Thursday night in 11 innings. The MVP, Kelly Nelson, of the league and of the team. The JFK went to Steph Noski, and the Most Improved went to Janet Javi. The JV team also went 16 and 0, so graduating all those seniors, I don't think our softball program's going away. And I guess I would just like to close with a few comments. I'd like to thank Dr. Vieta, Ms. Lafayette, the school committee, and the rest of the administration. I'm going to get emotional for the past 11 years and helping to mold me into the educator that I've become. And when you spend this long somewhere, it's definitely bittersweet, so my family and I can't say anything but thank you. And we'll be Norton's third and fourth biggest fan behind Peter Wiggins-
Yep.
And Mary Taylor, of course.
Oh, yeah.
And congrats to Mr. Sumner, being named the new athletic director, and I think he's going to do a great job. So thank you, and go Lancers.
Go Lancers! As Ted shakes hands, I think it's really important that every, you know, Ted was the first AD to start coming to school committee meetings on a regular basis at the end of the season and a couple of times because of those written reports, but the program has grown, not only in the number of teams, not in the middle school participation, the high school sports, and a lot of time away from family for him, so thank you. I wish you the best of luck, as you know. If we do cross our paths, I hope the Lancers kick your butt. Besides that, go get them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move on to high school handbook changes, and Ms. Gia.
Ms. Gia is here to give us the most recent updates so that we can cross Ts and dotted Is on our handbook, align things in a way that we feel supported in terms of situations as they come up, and I am fully endorsing the recommendation of the high school administration as written in your packet.
So we have three handbook changes to throw in for the 2018, 2018 to 2019 school year. First, we want to add tech language that defines the date and manner for parents to opt out of having their students' pictures or videos posted on school websites, social media, et cetera. The date of the opt-out deadline is October 1st, 2018, and they have to inform us in writing that they want to opt out of having their students' pictures and videos on websites and such.
Is that not in there at all now?
I guess it's not in there at all.
Oh, no.
So one question-
That's new language that we added.
So would we have to change this to October 1st of the school year? So, because we want to write this as 2018. Yeah, the handbooks get changed, all the accuracy dates get changed every year.
Over the summer we change all of that.
Good catch.
Then we want to add, another thing we don't have in the handbook at all is language around elevator use. So it's been at least once a year we have an issue around the elevator, where students who are not authorized to use it, use it. And sometimes when that happens, the students end up maybe fooling around in the elevator by jumping up and down or moving side to side, and then the elevator shuts down. And it takes a lot of time, a lot of resources, and a good amount of money for us to address that. Currently in our handbook, all we have is being an unauthorized area, which is detention, which we don't think is significant enough consequence for this particular infraction, so we want to add the language in and say that, first of all, if you go into the elevator and you don't have authorization to do so, and the authorization should be coming from the nurse, because you should only go into the elevator if you are disabled in some way. If you don't have that authorization, you get a Saturday school, because that's our policy for insubordination. That's our, I should say, our consequence for insubordination. If you then behave in a certain way that leads to the elevator breaking down and fire department coming out and the elevator repair technician coming out, then it's going to be at least a $500, or I should say up to a $500 charge to defer the cost of the elevator repair. And so then, moving on to the next change in the handbook, similar to what the middle school had done, we want to basically change the language so that we have a consequence of a suspension for students who are found in possession of vaping devices. It's much more difficult to prove that someone's actually been vaping, but we know it's happening. You can walk by bathrooms, you can smell it, but you can't catch people in the act because the smoke is much more limited. It's just an instantaneous thing, it comes and it goes. So if we're suspicious of the behavior and we find somebody in possession of a vaping device, instead of giving them a Saturday school, which is currently what's in our handbook, we're going to suspend them. And so the first infraction would be a two-day suspension, and the second and any infraction after that, any subsequent infraction would be three days. So those are the changes we'd like to make to our handbook for this year.
And so under the first one, there was one about the, they could pay for, but it's crossed out of the first one. Is that, did we change our rank?
Say that again.
Under the first one, it said that the student may enroll in an approved smoking-
We just don't know of any. There used to be, when that was put in the handbook, this was prior to my appointment at high school, there was something in sturdy, I believe, where students could be asked to attend that smoking cessation course or whatever it was called, but now we don't know of any. And actually, when I went to a conference this year, no one could answer the question of where there was such a program. So yes, that would be a great option for us, but we don't know of any that exist. And no one we asked knows of any that exist.
One that's in Brockton, that's just drug abuse and alcoholism, right?
Correct. It's not nicotine and/or, I mean, if it was, if they're using through vaping, for example, marijuana oils, then we have considerations. You've got to remember that it's always a recommendation, not a requirement. Once it's a requirement, you owe the cost, you owe the full cost of it.
Well, I think this one said here it would be to their-
Right.
Their own cost.
Their own cost.
Why can't we just make it the same as if they're actually using the device? Why is, if they just have possession of it, is it less-
We can absolutely prove. I mean, I guess we could, and we do after-
Does it matter? I mean, I'm just asking that question because my guess would be, and Dr. Vieta and I have had this conversation about consequence. I'm not exactly sure that students necessarily are concerned about consequence. So I think we're seeing it happen in high school, we're seeing it in middle school, it's a huge issue. I am not sure.
I could speak to that.
Thank you.
With the vaping stuff, it's not like, there's obviously to be like a pack of Marlboros, you'll know what it is, you can tell by the packaging, it was familiar to all people what that was, it was nicotine. With the vaping things, you don't know what it is, and if you suspend someone for drug use, that could be a criminal thing, and if you don't have any evidence as to what exactly that drug was, and then if you're suspending them for using something, is it drugs, is it cigarettes, we have no idea. That's why just, we have, they first get, they have possession of a device that can deliver drugs. Could be nicotine, it could be nothing, but the device is what, you know, makes it possible. But I'm just wary to suspend someone for drug use not knowing if they've used drugs.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying that they're using it. I'm suggesting that the fact that they have it-
Oh, just-
-on school property in their possession could be just be-
It shouldn't matter if they used it or didn't use it.
Right.
It's still on-
You're saying three days in either case, so possession, three days, use.
Or even change it. Do, I mean, I'm not suggesting that any of this, I'm not in your offices dealing with this, but maybe possession is the three days and actual use is the five day. I, you know, I'm not sure what it should be, but I just think it's a huge issue. It's happening in many school districts, not just sort of in Norton, and I think that the fact that it seems like it's getting younger, it seems like it's kind of moving down into our middle school ages, sort of across the board, not in Norton per se.
I just know that, I mean, from my recent experience over the last couple of years, that due to state laws that have changed and also due to the expectation that consequences are progressive, that we can, we're supposed to, you know, first offense is one thing, second offense is a reader, consequence than that first offense. So we felt if we put in basically a minimum and then we went to an absolute, it would be more aligned with what's expected of us.
So one of the things that always comes up with this is that the responsibility now falls for any student, regardless of who they are, their special needs or not, ELL and anything else, that we show progressive discipline because we're- anything else, that we show progressive discipline because we're responsible literally for the education while they're suspended. It's a huge change, it was under chapter 222, done in 2000, and I think it was 2012 if I remember correctly, thereabouts. So the issue here that comes into play is the student who tries to hide their vaping from you in the bathroom, right? Versus the student who decides they're getting up in the middle of a public place and just stopped vaping, which the administration knows is one of my biggest pet peeves, because that's a, I got one kid who's trying to hide it and knows it's wrong, and I got another student who just says, "I'm just gonna vape in the middle of the room if I need to." And I think what we're trying to figure out is how to make some of our families uncomfortable, because some of our kids are gonna hit multiple suspensions pretty quickly. That's number one. Number two, this doesn't, none of this stops the administration for saying that, you know, second and subsequent offenses, that, you know what, this is the fourth time, this is the fifth time I've had it, I'm moving this from three days to six days. They always have that leeway. Now, it's not a leeway that a lot of administrators like, but it's one that we're getting used to more, because they don't have the time to constantly be investigating, were they vaping, was it just on them, and so on and so forth, because that's what the kids do. So, you know, one of the language, one of the changes we could put on here is that, you know, put a bullet right underneath that, that the administration for subsequent offenses has the recommendation to either A, suspend for longer time, or require that, request that the parents become involved and have the child, the student, attend a sensation class of some sort. What Vinnie was speaking about, if I just made, what Vinnie was speaking about is also very interesting, because you gotta remember that some of the products in these vaping situations, we don't know what they are. Right? And it's wonderful for a parent to say, "No, I'll, we'll take the three days, because if they're smart, we're not sending that out to be tested." Because if we're sending that out to be tested and it comes back positive, now we have a police matter as well. We don't wanna, we don't wanna be looking the other way in any of these situations.
Whenever we've been suspicious, we do have the ability to use the resource officers, he has a certain number of kits where he can test the oil, the contents, and if it tests positive, THC oil, then it is a, obviously a 10-day suspension, so possession of drugs instead of a vaping device.
I would just, Lisa, I would just add the language underneath here that for the purposes of this section, vaping tobacco, that we add, we add that the administration has the full support to include alternatives, a further suspension and/or other requirements as needed. Because we, at the end of the day, we want to educate kids, right? And I, I struggle with this because in my day of being a principal, I didn't have chapter 222, and I kinda felt like it gave me a little bit more leeway. Now we're, we're, we'll show progressive discipline, which I think we should always. But, I mean, we have a kid who comes down to the office one time a year and they vape, and they're getting a three day, and then you have a kid who's been in the office 15 times, and you're just gonna go three days, three days, three days. We're never gonna go anywhere. We're gonna be ring around the rosy with the kids. So I think that some alternative ways, potentially, you know, subsequent can also include for either smoking or in possession, other means as administered, as determined by the administration. And the only request I would have for the administration is that they be consistent amongst students in providing progressive discipline. And it gives you more leeway. I mean, you know, you and I both know that we have kids that are a good talking to, potentially giving them the resources with their families to go see someone, could be the reason why they no longer vape. Or maybe it's the reason they no longer vape in school, which at the end of the day is my responsibility. There's another responsibility that belongs at home that I don't have. So. You do have to vote on this, so I would say with the added amendment of a bullet that subsequent offenses for either are up to the administration to implement alter...
To increase as needed.
Increase to suspension and/or alternative means as needed. In the old days, we used to have the Board of Health involved with cigarette smoking, and I would say to, back in my days at TC, I would say to the dean of students, this is a family that we could potentially say, "You need to get some sensation support," and instead of suspending for 10 days, because the child needs to be in school, not at home by themselves.
Doing exactly what...
Doing exactly what we suspended. Promptly vaping. Okay? And it is a different vote for each handbook.
So one, here, pardon, then?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion to approve the changes to the high school handbook is written with the added amendment. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, to vote?
Yep. All those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Lisa.
Mr. Goldstein, have you changed, Mr. Goldstein?
Mr. Goldstein is not here.
Very different.
He's got a haircut.
Looks good.
Thanks. So we don't have many changes, just some language that the assistant superintendent recommended we put in there to do with using housing status as a whole discrimination. So we added that. And then we'll make all necessary updates, dates and times, page numbers, and we look through it for any further amendments.
I'm sorry?
Any discussion, any questions?
No.
So we get a motion for the middle school changes in your book. Motion?
Second.
Discussion? And a vote?
Aye. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
It's 2-0.
I like this job.
We fine. You're doing a great job.
Aye. So you're all set. Thank you.
Great job.
Short and sweet, I like it. Okay, and then we have the second reading to vote the policy IGB and K and L.
Okay, so just a few tonight. This is the culminating event of all of our policy work that has been placed over the last few months. Second reading for IGD, not IGD, it's a typo on our agenda, I believe, the curriculum adoption, which we updated last time, and the sections K and L. So we need to do a vote to approve separately.
And we have any comments on the second reading?
Pretty clean. So you need a vote for each, sure. First vote would be to approve policy IGD.
So a motion to approve IGD. Second.
No, so move, so move. Diane, it's second.
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 Any discussion?
No.
Okay, a vote to approve. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, you need a vote to approve section K. Okay, now together?
I believe we can do change now together, because it's second read of rule. And then we're going to go and approve the entire...
So we can do K and L together?
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion to approve K and L, new policies. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we need to adopt the entire policy manual, and the language for that is right there for you under item number nine in your packet.
We just need a specific language to make sure that we are adopting and getting rid of everything before.
So I'll make it as a recommendation, so I'll read it for you, somebody just needs to motion second. So I'm making a recommendation that we adopt the policy manual that's previously approved in form, and we send all previous versions of the policy manual published prior to today's date, 6/18/18. That is my recommendation. So move.
Second. All those in favor? Oh, discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
The next steps is we'll reach out to, oh, it was fun. We'll reach out to MASC, they'll go through, they will update match reference policies, and it will be available. Each committee member will get an actual handbook and a USB port, and will be able to USB drive, we'll put it all on the website, which we hope for September.
Can we get a copy for Diane? Because she's always asking me for one of those, so...
We'll get her own copies. And then we'll have conversations about updating that kindergarten. Wonderful. Okay.
And just as a reminder, you know, one of the things we need to do, not next year but the year after, is besides policies that come down the road that we have to change, or issues like we have tonight, we just need to start doing a section, you know, at a time, so that we're, you know, we're constantly changing. Because the last time it was done, it was in 2018 years later, you know, we finally updated them. And it's a lot of work, don't get me wrong, and I'm not second guessing that, but it's, we shouldn't be waiting 18 years to be able to do it.
My son graduated kindergarten when it was last written, he just graduated college, so there might have been a few gaps in there that weren't quite covered. Updated now. Okay, so vote to approve transfers?
Yep, so as of now, we don't need any transfers, but we will from now until the end of the year, or really till July 13th, when all conferences must be made out of town hall. So I just need a vote to approve those transfers that will happen from now until that date.
Okay, so a vote to approve the transfers between now and July 13th?
So move.
Second? Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. A vote to update the statement of non-discrimination.
So Mr. Hayward already mentioned this to you, and updated it in the middle school policy. Right now, our current non-discrimination statement does not include housing status as a protected classification for students. So this amendment that you have here, it says, "Is the policy of Norton Public Schools provide a learning environment free from discrimination or harassment. All students regardless of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, limited English proficiency, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, or housing status have equal access to all programs, including athletics and other curricular activities." So this would be something that you see our non-discrimination notice on all of our information, this would replace our current notice.
Need a vote? Yes. So a vote to...
The only thing that was changed is housing status?
Yes.
So your vote is to add housing status to your non-discrimination policy?
So a vote to update the non-discrimination policy?
So move.
Second? Second. A favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Strategic plan update. I'm busy. Wow.
Okay, so this is just an overview of the work that was done over the last three years on our current strategic plan. I did give you a new version tonight, because I inadvertently made a error. So over the last four years, sorry, last three years, we had four primary goals. The first one was academic success for all students. The second was enriching student learning experiences by expanding school programs. The third was investing in our staff with high-quality professional talent and recruiting practices. And the fourth was continuing to be a source of pride for our community, and that focused a lot on our facilities. As you can see from the update, we have a lot of these items that have been completed, including our equal access to full-day kindergarten for all students. We have implemented a lot of our technology goals in regards to rolling out our one-to-one and currently in grades four through 10. Middle school is one-through-one, one-to-one, all of our staff have laptops. We also have done a lot of work in regards to the alignment of our curriculum, which is a process that is always ongoing. Overall, the majority of these items have been completed. There is one that talks about updating our STEM lab here at the middle school. We started to do that as part of a two-year process. We were able to get through year one, not able to get to year two at this point yet. So that is still in need here at the middle school. We are starting the process of developing our next strategic plan, which we call Vision 2021, which will take us through 2018 to June of 2021.
18, 19, 20.
Which we have a committee that will be getting together in September, July. So we are looking at focusing on social learning for our students, inclusive practices, and a few other items that the committee will kind of work to really pinpoint what are these areas. So overall, I think when Dr. Vieta talked here, we had a strategic plan that was about 83 points long, that included everything from full-day kindergarten to making sure that we have the state police dogs here to get the keys off of our lawn. So this, yeah, this strategic plan was very...
Pretty sure the state police dogs would be used better elsewhere.
Okay. It was, it was much easier to work through this process. Jean and Karen and I, you know, would refer back to it often to make sure that we run that, so. It's a good process.
So, Madam Chair, any discussion?
But just as you know, Ms. Gallagher is your representative of that strategic plan in the fall. She'll be fine.
All right, moving on to booster update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I met with the boosters, the Unification Booster Club, which right now we have four folks that are taking, calling, what I'm calling, pro-tem positions. I'm gonna be very clear of this process. These are independent organizations, they're still doing their own fundraising, they still have their own board that's, you know, helping to determine items. But we're unifying under, looking at how we can better utilize big business as a way to support our athletic program and offset those major things that we need to plan for. I.e., one of them that's been discussed publicly has been how to keep our use of these down. Currently, every program except for a few have forwarded that they are involved. The president pro-tem is Anthony Pacino, who's from wrestling. Vice president pro-tem is Denise O'Neil from football. Secretary pro-tem is Mark Buchanan from golf. And treasurer pro-tem is Sally Olare from Spring Track Girls. These four folks are meeting with me. I was scheduled to be on vacation, but I'm gonna be back for an evening for the purposes of meeting with them to come up with what would be either the 501(c)(3) that needs to be filed, or taking another name, changing it, and organizing it that way. We have also received a petition from two, I shouldn't say petition, we've been told by two organizations, and I'm refraining from publicly announcing them, who have sent me a letter from an attorney on letterhead stating that they will not be involved. So I will be looking for direction on that response from the school committee. I have filed that with legal counsel, as I have some significant issues considering that you hold the rights to Norton Public Schools, Norton High School, and to those student athletes, and to the use of facilities, and to accepting or not accepting any donations that come in. So I have to refer that to the attorney for the district to review based on receiving a letter from an attorney. So at that, at this time, those two organizations will be communicated with by my office about what the future is in the fall, and of course, that decision will be made by you. I may have to call an emergency meeting or timeline, we may wait until the fall, as only one of these two sports potentially is a fall sport. I think it's unfortunate that it's come to this circumstance, sending the superintendent of schools a letter on an attorney letterhead, but of course, in America, we have that right to do so, and I look forward to going through a process of finding the appropriate way for us to move forward instead of being told what to do by an organization that, to be quite frank, I don't believe under the law you even have to accept and recognize going forward, but again, we'll see how that fits. At the end of the day, I don't want to hurt kids, and I won't hurt kids, but I really do think this is a very poor decision. I will also want to note that my concern of this impact is how does it impact the rest? And, you know, the concern that I have is that everybody's coming under the understanding that everybody's a registered non-for-profit and has their money, and is determining, I mean, one of the things we've talked about specifically, how to fundraise, was that we wanted our local sports to fundraise, to have the canning and the cot washes and all of that, but also move away from that into more of the adults supporting the athletes, than just the athletes having to go out there and fundraise and so on and so forth. So I look forward to having these discussions with you and coming back. I'm very grateful to those who have stepped forward and are taking up more of their time to try to come up with something that we can then file with, with the state. Those meetings are not attended by me, I am not a voting member of these meetings, I'm simply doing what I do on the day after the election with you folks, which is to take the gall of for one vote, to put people in place, and then I'm done. The athletic director does not have a vote, the building principal does not have a vote. They attend, because I believe that any concept of money coming into the school department or paying for ABC should be clearly identified, because it's our student athletes and sports organizations that belong to Norton Public Schools that are benefiting from that. So that's the update, very positive meeting, it went well. I continue to move forward with the folks who want to move forward, and do so in a way to continue with what I would call the excellence, tradition, and pride of the athletic program, which is to, in my opinion, send a very clear message to our student athletes that it's about us working together to do better things and not about separate groups doing their own thing. That's my... That's my...
On this, are we still chasing a couple of booster clubs?
Yeah, so we're, we're still chasing a few of them.
I know we have two that are...
Yeah, we have a few on this list that really is communication issues that's taking place, or they're figuring out, instead of filing their own, can I just use the big ones? And we've said from the beginning that they could. It would be foundationally noted that they were part of that.
Because I think one of them I didn't see was one of the newer organizations.
Right, yep, yep.
Or two were actually.
And then we've also heard from a few families that are interested in how can we unify our own middle school sports so that our families are being more supportive of each other instead of remember paying $350 fee and then every other penny for the rest of that sport, which can be hundreds of dollars more per student athlete, so.
I think it's worth noting that when we were interviewing athletic directors or, or people for the athletic director position, how many athletic directors asked about a human-tyled organization?
I know at our level, every single one of them did. Interesting.
I, I wouldn't know exactly the number, but I would think it was at least four or five of the candidates who asked if we had a unified booster, that that was sort of where they were coming from or had experience with that. So I think that it's very disheartening that the concept of us working for the better good together is not necessarily the way that this is being perceived by some, but it was interesting, and I do think that it definitely was on the radar screen as an athletic director.
Okay. Right, discussion. Moving on, vote to approve the agreement regarding Norton paraprofessional contract.
The subcommittee of personnel, which is Ms. Gallagher and Mr. Sabas, negotiated a one-year agreement with the paraprofessionals at 2.25%, as noted in the contract, to reflect the one-year agreement beginning July 1st and ending June 2019. The two sides have agreed to continue negotiating, and the paraprofessionals organization have in fact endorsed this one-year agreement overwhelmingly. Tonight, you need to take a formal vote to approve it as well. If you so choose, and the originals are there for you to sign.
So we need a vote to approve the agreement regarding the paraprofessional contract for the 2018-19?
As read.
As read. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Shaking their heads at each other. A lot of work by Diane in getting us to the table, and we continue to plug along.
Okay, Chapter 70 funding?
Thank Madam Chair. The committee, the school committee throughout the states have been voting on supporting the following budget review recommendation. And I, to be quite honest, Dan brought this forth the other day, and I said, okay, you know, if we're interested, let's get behind it. So this is a scenario where, especially after today, it becomes even more important. If you haven't heard the, what was being called the millionaire's tax, which was a ballot question for this November, today, anyone making over a million dollars for another 4% was rejected by the Superior Court of Massachusetts, Superior Court of Massachusetts, that the, the way that it was written cannot be done. And so therefore, it will not be a ballot question in the fall, and that the AG has to literally take it off the ballot. I know as public educators, we all make millions, and we are very happy to see that. But what it does mean is that this, this resolution that was passed as soon as last year by some school committees is even more important now because we, the idea behind those funds was that some of it would be, a significant amount of it was going to education or transportation. So the resolution to be read is, is that whereas the Mass Foundation Review Committee, Review Commission identified two areas, employee health insurance and special education, where the Mass Foundation budget is significant in the United States, the true cost of educating students in the Commonwealth and has failed to keep pace with rising costs, whereas the underfunding means the cost of providing equal education has increasingly been borne by local communities, both often at the expense of other vital municipal operations, whereas investing in education today leads to higher incomes and thus less investment in police, prisons, subsidies, subsidized healthcare, low-income housing, welfare, et cetera, in the future, whereas state and local economies are most effectively strengthened by investing in education and increasing the number of well-educated workers. Therefore, be resolved that the Norton School Committee of Norton, Massachusetts, calls on the Massachusetts legislature and the governor of Massachusetts to fully fund and adopt the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the immediate future. If you decide to support it, you need a motion, discussion, and a vote.
So a motion to approve the resolution for Chapter 70 funding? So, and second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So will this be right at the school committee conference?
Yeah, so they've already put it into the conference last year. If you remember, they've asked us support. We're one of the school committees that is still out there, many, not just us, but we'd be at the list of supporting this as well.
Yeah, when I, when I came across, there was a significant amount of school committees already on board, so it just made the natural progression that we should be on the vote as well.
Moving on to sixteen, vote to appoint superintendent for the directors of PCC for the 19, 19, 20.
Yeah, so this is the organization at Stonehill that runs at Stonehill College years ago for students who are able to provide up to six weeks of summer school at, that are taking specialized programs in STEM and arts and forensic sciences, for example, is one of the major ones, but even the favorites. And we're actually this year continuing to do the six week, but in the future might have some more flexibility because of the competition. We've been averaging two students a year, not enough. Our counterparts are offering, are getting as much as 20 to 40 students, so we need to do a better job internally of trying to get, it is a cost of, you know, 2,600 bucks, so it's not cheap per se, but it's also an investment of six weeks of going to school Monday through Friday at a college campus and staying there and learning from peers and so on and so forth. So it is a board.
What's the ages for that?
It's entering seven through 10. Used to be just eight, nine, and 10. It's dropped down to seven. So there's a board. We meet about six times a year. The total fee for this program, so that you know, is $1 per student to be a member, which allows for us to be active on the board, make decisions, change the curriculum, change the fees and all that stuff. And right now, we've been, we were financially struggling for a while. This year, we've definitely seen a step in the right direction as a board, so it's a positive thing for the kids.
Any other questions or comments? So a vote to appoint Dr. Bieta to the board of directors of PCC. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. All right, a vote to approve the appointment of school business manager.
So I'm going to move seats since this is a process, as you all know. I'd like to welcome Matthew Wells. Everyone. Matthew has gone through a process as the school business manager. No one can ever take over for Lank, he wanted me to say that. And Matt comes to us from North Borough, South Borough Public Schools, and prior to that, Concorde Calo. You have his, his resume in front of you with information. He has met with a small group that went through the first screening process, an interview, then a second group, which included Mrs. Sabas and Ms. Cohen, who can, I know they're not here tonight, but they can vouch for him as the candidate of choice coming out of that. We had 14 applicants this time of the year. To be quite honest, that's a low number, but we had seven candidates that were sitting business manager and one candidate that was preparing but hadn't done it yet, but was in the classroom. And we interviewed five of those candidates, and we liked four of them, of the candidates very much. They came again with different experience, different background, but Matt really came to the, to the top as being the person who can continue to move us in the right direction as Link has done, I think, in this four years here with us. And so I'll turn it over to Matt to introduce himself and say a few words to you.
So again, Matt Wells, brief overview of my experience. I've worked for three different central offices over the past 11 years and an increasing role of responsibility. I've managed five different municipal school districts and three regionals. Prior to that, I was in private industry, but I really have a passion for school business administration. I've found a lot of enjoyment in doing this work. The customer is wonderful, so. A personal note, I live in Marlboro. I have three children of my own, a 16-year-old, a 7-year-old, and an almost 6-year-old that I'm looking forward to helping out in this district.
I saw you were in Amherst, I bet you weren't glad they're today. They had a tornado in the morning there, so.
Yes, which I think those are stretched in New Hampshire, they keep pretty healthy.
Yeah.
Western Mass weather can be a little fun.
Yep, yep.
So as you know, as the process, we, we took the two subcommittees and moved those folks to represent you as much as possible because we were trying to get this done and meet some deadlines, have some transition time. I'm proud to say that with your approval tonight, Matt will be able to join us on Monday, July 2nd, which is fantastic. I will be reaching out to his current superintendent upon your vote tonight and just reaching out, as I have with Bob Tremblay of Framingham, that we, we will work with each other and be flexible if needed, as he can transition with the person, the new person going into their system in the same way that Link will help us in transitioning Matt into our system. By state statute, the vote is a recommendation of the superintendent of schools for hire, and then you can vote my recommendation up or down. Same thing with the assistant superintendent, PPS director, those are the school nurse, school physician, I think those are the five, if I remember correctly. And my physician, you fully vetted me, so. I have a contract, not to put any pressure, to sign handles to the line, and we make this...
He doesn't have to interview like I did?
No, no, we fast-tracked that interview with the other team, pardon me. But we welcome, we welcome Matt, we're looking forward to it, and we'll celebrate him coming on board, and we'll have a few other words about him later.
All right, so... Did I have a speech?
No, no speech, no, I wish him well, I really do. I guess, I think you're going to get rid of me the next item, so I'll talk.
All right, so do you guys have any questions?
No.
All right, so a vote to...
Welcome to the north.
You have to vote in first.
Well, now you know how I'm...
A vote to approve appointment of school business manager?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right, and just for the record, the subcommittee voted in the same way your two representatives in the last. So I'll sign one. You guys don't know how much this means to me because I was so worried about this.
Thank you. All right. Yes. I think I was at the...
Great, votes for board.
Thank you. Now you sweat your suit on your way out.
And I'd better offer than Link.
Link's not bad.
Could be better.
Thank you to the committee, by the way.
So that wraps up our agenda items, but do we have any others?
We do. I just wanted to give the committee an update on, Mr. Howley was here with a few students from the middle school competed, so I just got a short recap of our students who attended the National History Day at the University of Maryland last week with their advisor, Mr. Howley. Lila McKay and Isabella Demont qualified for nationals with their website on Debra Sampson, and Catherine Powers and Sophie Diamore qualified for their film on the Supreme Court, Buck versus Bell. All four students represented MS in Massachusetts very well, only two projects from each state in each category qualified in the nationals, so these students are in a very elite group. Sophie and Catherine had the added distinction of receiving a national honorable mention for their film. This honor means that they finished in the top 20 in the nation for their film and beat out more than 80% of the other projects submitted. So congratulations to the four students and our colleague, Mr. Howley, for supporting them. Job well done. The high school, so that you know as information, through some of the resignations, we've made some shifts in personnel. We just posted today for a computer science position based on a resignation. We think our class sizes are in pretty good shape for next year, to be quite honest, based upon what we're seeing for, in the moment. So I wanted to just give you the update that we, once again, are trying to move forward, but without new money, not a new position, literally somebody resigns and leaves, and we're tweaking that into a position of need to move us into continuation of 21st century learning. Howley Boosers, there's been a question that's come forth. This has happened before, you have voted no not to, and that is the prorating of transportation, that if somebody only takes the bus in for X number of days, we would prorate it. The reason against it is because we base the budget on the full amount, number one, and number two, how do we even keep this? We just don't have the staffing. But I didn't want the parent to think I didn't bring it forward and publicly, so I am. I know that if you're going to take out prorating, you need to take it up in the budget process early on because it, there is a process we would have to need to play. We would have to determine, or now Matt in the future would have to determine, you know, what, what does this really mean because of the fee? If we prorate it, what does that mean? That's number one. Number two, our bus companies can't have that responsibility. I mean, how are our bus drivers going to know when somebody's supposed to be on there three days versus two days and take the responsibility for that versus now, kids are on and off from the school and it comes from the school onto the bus? So I have some concerns about how we would be able to do it. I'm not trying to price gouge the parents because I know it's a lot of money for two kids, but I just don't know how we do it. But I, I did bring it forth, and if, if you want no action on it, you just keep it as is. I'm sorry?
Can I just make a comment on that, too?
Sure.
So the one ways we don't do, but if, say, a kid's a senior and he's getting his license in January, we'll prorate it for the first six months. You know, we, we budget according to, you know, looking at the past couple of years, how often that's happened. So we have done that in the past, but the one way, just in the morning, we haven't done.
Right, so this, this speaks to someone who just needs to go three days a week, there's two kids, it's three days a week, but only in the AM, let's say, or PM, I can't remember the exact story, but the idea is, how do you, you know, how do you charge somebody $700 for that? And I, I get it, but I just don't know how we can establish policies. We can, we can absolutely put them on payment plans, but how do we, how are we going to track this?
I know, but when did we finally finalize the last payment that we rolled?
For the bus payments, for the arrangements?
Have we even yet?
I'm, I'm still clicking.
Okay, so I just think that that's in there.
It is.
It doesn't make, it would make it worse if it goes one way, this prorating and the payment plans aren't terrible, it's better than what it used to be, but if we do start doing one way, it's just like Dr. Bieta said, keeping track of it is, we just don't have the manpower in the office to do it.
I mean, even if you prorate it, you're not getting rid of that bus on the other two days or not today.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
No, I think we're just, something we can look at during our budget process.
So we can take no action?
Mm-hmm. You don't need a vote. Just no action. Okay. I, I just want to publicly thank my colleagues from my left here. It's been quite, you know, Link and I interviewed off-site at Masbo when I, when, literally, if you remember, it was April going into May, when our former business manager Barry Necton, who did an awesome job for us, got another higher-paying job with better benefits and closer to home. I don't know why you do that, but I also think, you know, it speaks to one of our issues as a district, which is, you know, how do we compensate appropriately so we're not constantly doing this? And Link joined us, has done a fantastic job in, in moving us forward and instituting different transportation, different issues in food services. School Choice has really come in under his realm in how to utilize those funds in an appropriate way, so we wish him luck. If you have a son, Joseph is a good name.
Link, Link number five.
Is enough.
My dad, he was on me.
Yeah, but it's been, it's been a really good run, and I think Link has brought something to the central office as part of the team to resolve critical issues, find the extra $2 that we need for something. By the way, I got one of those for you.
You gotta say way more than $2.
Anything for those kids, you keep saying, right? But we wish him well, and I think it speaks to Norton Public Schools and the community that, you know, we've gotten somebody of his experience to become experienced with us and not go to a huge school district and, and order people around and what to do. And so we wish you luck.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So just to ride on Dr. Bieta's coattails on that one, I appreciate the school committee, and we just confirmed that none of you hired me, so.
That's true.
Yeah, when I interviewed right there and sweat through my suit for the first time ever. It was four years ago, and I really appreciate the opportunity the school committee gave me and Dr. Bieta. The administrative team has been so great to me. You guys have been awesome. Now, excuse me, geez. You know, as, as a person, as an educator, you guys... Norton has been awesome to me, the people here, the staff here, and I just want to thank everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now you get your gift. There you go. You get your gift.
For you, the hardware.
We, I'm sure that we can find a $10 subway card from Grab Night that was left over.
It's under $50.
We'll get it together later in the week to celebrate those who can make it so.
Well, as school committee members, I know, at least on my behalf, I can say, you make our job a lot easier when it's not easy at all. To know that, to get figures and that kind of thing, and know that they're right, and know that we can rely on them, and know that that's what we have to work with, makes it a lot easier than second guessing someone, or are you sure you couldn't find this, or whatever? So you've, you've made it a lot easier for us, too.
Hopefully, in your travels to Framingham, you update that font a little bit. Mr. Wells, we needed a little bigger font than Link's. Don't just copy and paste from Link's report.
All right, I'll add, add for Janice, and he wants bigger font, too, just so you know. But thank you very much for everything you've done.
Tookikandams, I gave you a list tonight that came to me through some work that I'm doing, thanks to the work of the academic coordinator, six to 12 that have been cut. That is a list for you to have. I will be doing a further follow-up with you later on electronically, and then as needed. I just wanted to make sure that you had some specification of what they do and mean to the high school, and how important it is for us to really think about how we're going to do this in the future in a way, because we need a plan for September. So that's number one. Number two, I'd like to thank, as, as, none of us can do this if it wasn't for the people I have here, the people that are in the buildings every day, the teachers, the support staff, the custodians, the secretaries, the paraprofessionals, the food services that we know was a very difficult decision this year. We can't do this, any of this, if it wasn't for them, number one. Number two, we can't do it if we don't have parents who trust us to provide a good, safe place with an excellent education, and our supporters, those who don't have children in the system, but supports no matter what, because they want to make sure that, that tradition and our excellence, tradition and pride are part of this community in this public education system. It's, it's awesome to know that Thursday is only three days away, but it's even better to know that we're already starting looking forward to September. The administration is trying to do what the kids are doing and the teachers are doing, which is to get to Thursday, and take some time off, and then come back July 2nd rejuvenated and ready to start planning for our priorities for September. So thank you to the families, to the kids, student leaders that are here, and then lastly, to my bosses, the school committee, thank you so much for your support.
And the mayor of Norton, Peter J. Wiggins.
And the mayor of Norton, Peter J. Wiggins, of course. I don't know what we would do without you, Peter.
Good luck!
You're a good man. So thank you, and have a good night.
Do you have anything else?
I just have one thing. I know we recently held our relay for life. The director of that chapter is actually a friend of mine. She reached out, she said, "Thank you to NHS, a lot of people liked the location." It was actually starting as softball was starting, so just, it was a constant flow of people, and a lot of people even were like, "Oh, what's on this traffic in parking at the Yell," so they were happy to be here, they appreciated us.
I'm glad you just said that, because through Lisa's work of making sure that some students have Saturday detention, I received, I received a direct email from our custodian who was working that day, who directly said, "Four of the students that were there for detention." So they, they were there because they made a tiny mistake, a small mistake, a consequence they had to pay for, but he had to write an email to us stating, "Those kids took the lead in helping to support that day through cleanup and just being positive about Norton High School." That's kind of cool, if you think about it, right? You're dealing with a consequence, and then you say, "You know what, I'm old enough to deal with the consequence, and then represent my school in a positive way." So kudos, I didn't get any names, I just got told there was four students, but kudos to them, and you probably know who they are, so thank them for me, if you will.
I already thanked them again.
Yes, so appreciate that.
All right, any other business?
I did, I did notice, even though they might not have been our students, but they are Norton residents, that the two valedictorians, salvadorian of the charter school were both from Norton.
Yep.
So that was nice.
Congratulations to them.
Definitely. All right, so this is our last meeting for the year. Our next meeting will be Thursday, we're changing to Thursday, September 6th. And in closing, I'd just like to thank Ken Curley for all of his service, and Nick Lynch for all of his, and welcome Matt to the team, so, I guess that...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great summer, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.